You are unmuted.
Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Um, just, what's your allegiance?
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Jeff.
Good evening Jeff.
I have shingles, you know that?
I didn't know that, that's unfortunate. My brain one that gets those and they're pretty bad.
You're live on the internet right now.
Okay. A select board meeting, May 19th, 2020. We've gone through all of our administrative business. Comments from town officials. We received a Department of Transportation letter that they're going to rework Route 25 from the town common to the school on Route 25. That work will take place over the summer. And the map of the area they're going to work is available in the minutes of this meeting. If there's any concerns of any citizens along this route with this project, just bring them up to, just make note and then we'll bring it up to the attention of the DOT. Thank you. Executive order, the next topic is executive order 25 from the governor. And he's made a temporary modification of interest penalties for late payment on property taxes during the COVID virus. And we need to decide what to do with the town of Wentworth, whether we're going to delay the, any taxes on, and not delay the taxes, delay any interest on the taxes during the COVID crisis. And I'm going to make a motion that we take a vote on whether to hold back on the interest or continue the interest on the taxes through the COVID time. President of the meeting is Jordan King, myself as a selectman. Omar is, well, I understand he's sick, he has shingles.
He had shingles.
And he's supposed to be here, but. So what's your thought? I just opened it for discussion, what's your thought?
Yeah, so I read it, that's not like a mandate to.
It's not a mandate, but it's a recommendation, it's for the town to decide on what to do with doing the taxes, whether to keep an interest rate up, rate through. It looks like the COVID virus, executive order is going to be about two or three months. Any thoughts?
I think I wouldn't mind giving people a break, a break on the interest, which probably can't be that much.
Okay. Double if you do, double if you don't, because Linda was mentioning last, two weeks ago, that the cash flow is very low, has it improved?
Uh, no.
No, it's not going to improve at this time of year. And you don't want to get deep in the dark, lackadaisical, should say. Well, any.
Given S, how much it might be.
I was speaking to Deb Zimmer, the tax collector, and she said she's, she's in touch with a lot of other tax collectors and nobody is waiving the interest.
Yeah, nobody's what?
No one is waiving the interest to them.
My feeling is not to waive it, I would vote that way, it would be, I would vote to keep the interest and it's for three months. So we're at a tie, so maybe we should table this till the next meeting. Because Omar's not here, vote. And he's not phoned in, Andrew?
No, he's not.
And he didn't let us know that he wasn't coming, okay.
Should I make a phone call, just to make sure he's already?
Yeah, it's unusual. He did email and say he was gonna.
Yeah, I got an email that said he was, he was going to be in the meeting.
I was speaking about three o'clock, he's back to room.
How does the rest of the room feel?
All right.
I haven't actually voted.
Omar's on the call.
Okay.
Fifty fifty. Double if you do, double if you don't.
Jeff? Yeah, probably.
Next, again, just.
It's three months.
Yeah, and I don't know, it depends on the course the tax goes to what the interest amounts.
Right.
It can get.
If you pay your taxes on time, you don't have.
Right.
The interest issue.
Right.
But you're way behind.
It's the delinquent people that are.
I have Omar's on the call and I have him unmuted, so if you need to talk to him, go on.
Omar? Omar? I don't. Maybe we don't have communication with Omar.
He's on, he's got audio.
He's on speaker.
Nope, that's on, yeah, that's on, yeah, you're definitely transmitting.
Okay, Omar, can you hear me? Well, I make a motion that we, we keep the interest on the delinquent taxes and I vote, oh, I can't vote, you're second.
Oh, I'll cycle that, I changed my mind.
And I vote to keep it.
I vote yes.
Okay, so it's, you can change your mind by adding two to zero. Like you said, damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Well, if you're already delinquent, you've already not been paying, so if someone was, didn't pay right now because of it, then maybe that would be different. If you've been delinquent for a long time.
Are we talking about the interest on back taxes or present, kind of taxes?
Whatever, interest on delinquent taxes.
On delinquent taxes, the delinquent, that was, that was history.
Excuse me, now we're going to move on. We had an emergency last week, Gove's Lane Culvert emergency, and we were able to.
Omar, there. Join me.
Hi, Omar, welcome in. We're just discussing the Gove's Lane Culvert. Mrs. Hinckley was the one that discovered the culvert issue and she brought the attention of Paul. They responded and sought DES clearance to take care of the culvert, it was a blocked culvert. It's interesting because when they dug down, it was about eight to nine feet down and it was a log culvert, it wasn't even a metal culvert. And they were able to get DES clearance to do the project, they appropriately protected the waterways and Jared King helped out and they repaired the culvert. And I'm driving by it on Route 25, if you pass Turner Road and you look to your right across Mrs. Hinckley's pond, you'll see that they did a brilliant job reconstructing the stonework, it really came out nice. And they got it in, at the time the weather was calling for heavy rain on Friday night and they were able to get it in before any of that rain came, so that was good, good for the environment, good job, Omar. Okay, Omar, you're next, you're, you're next up on the topic of the status of the missing non-public meeting minutes for 6-4-19, 12-10-19, and 1-7-20. What are your thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman, may I start that? I'd like to have a pointed privilege, which I, I guess I was on, was in this wrong meeting. Andrew, I'm sorry, I've been on the line since August the 5th waiting to get onto the meeting and then all of a sudden the meeting you're trying to get into is tomorrow. So I apologize for my ongoing Luddite tendency, which is something that haunts me just about every week, Mr. Chairman, but if I may.
Okay.
I'd like to apologize to you, Mr. Chairman, for my receipt, lack of, personal receipt lack of patience with regard to my last couple of meetings on the board. And I want to apologize to you, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. I understand that part of the problem was the technical delay and I, you know, I just, technology is just not my strong point and if there was any received disrespect on my part, that was not my intent, Mr. Chairman, although I, my patience level has been significantly reduced since November 18th of 2019, but I wanted to apologize to you in public, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, and we're just going to move on and stay positive.
Now, with regard to the, next item on the agenda, on the report to town officials, essentially, Mr. Chairman, in my reading of New Hampshire RST 91-8, call and buy exemption, access to governmental records and meetings, essentially what the town has up in its offices is what the towns have. My personal notes, which I take during a meeting, are my personal notes and they are not subject to the open records law. So essentially, more than essentially, what the town has up there already in the town, I, I, again, I have nothing in my, I have nothing in my possession other than my own personal notes that I took during the meeting. So anything that I have is my private record and I don't have to do anything with those, Mr. Chairman. So as I understand, today's workshop with the New Hampshire Municipal Association, it boils down to whatever the town has got now is what the town's going to have to do with whatever the town feels they need to do.
Okay, I was just following the guidance of the New Hampshire Municipal Association.
That's the guidance that I'm following plus the statute, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, good. The next item is Chief Trot is unable to be here, but he's submitted his.
He's on the phone.
Chief? Chief?
I, I just, I just unmuted him, he's, he's on.
Chief, could you give your report, please?
Can you hear me, Andrew?
Yes, Chief, we can hear you and everybody in the room can hear you.
Okay, so unfortunately, because of my physical opinion, I'm unable to access my report.
Oh.
If you, if you would, in, in the best interest of time, if you could read the reports that I forwarded, I would appreciate that. And I'm not sure it's all fair, but on my Zoom, the Zoom meeting that I'm attending, it doesn't show, you know, on the sort of voice, so.
I mean, could you repeat that last comment?
Yeah, I repeat that, sorry, comment is that there is no video on the Zoom meeting.
Oh, there's no video on the Zoom meeting?
Yes, we cannot, cannot see you when I'm on Zoom either, I don't think that makes sense, so.
Chief, Andrew, the video is on, they just decided not to put their video on specifically. Yeah, we can see you though.
Okay, okay, then go ahead, go ahead and with this, read my report and I can, I can answer any questions afterwards or any questions.
Okay. Followings is, thank you. Please note that the following is a summary of notable activity conducted by the Wentworth Police Department, but does not reflect all of the WPD activity during the timeframe. WPD continues to take part in the scheduled conference calls held during the week regarding updates concerning COVID-19. The police handled a sex offender registration last week, the registration was completed, which is mandatory by statute, and required completed paperwork was forwarded to the sex offender registry in Concord. The Wentworth Police Department responded to a domestic dispute between the mother, father, and an adult son. There was also an adult female at the scene at the time. The domestic, the domestic incident was very heated at the time, but Chief Trot was able to defuse the situation and the adult son and his female friend agreed to leave the property. The mother, father, were satisfied with their son just leaving and no further follow-up was required, there were no reported crimes during this incident. The Wentworth Police Department took a theft report for a property owner on North George Chester Road. It was reported that a $500 chain hoist had been stolen from the property and there was some video and photo evidence obtained at the scene. Chief Trot is currently investigating this theft. Chief Trot responded to an open door on property on Rowntown Road, this door has been found open in the past and was secured by Chief Trot. Please note that this report by an observant neighbor and we thank them for notifying the police department. The Wentworth Police Department assisted the Wentworth Warren ambulance with several calls for service within the town of Wentworth over the last couple of weeks. This is the end of the report. Any further comments, Chief?
The only comment that I feel compelled to add, and I'm hoping that there are a number of people that are listening, and I don't make this comment for the purpose of offending anybody, but I feel compelled to do so because of the number of calls and emails that I've received. The, the Wentworth Police Department is obviously a very active police department, the town of Wentworth is fortunate, I think, to have the members that we have and the work that we do, but I think it's important for me to remind the members of the community that if they feel that they're a victim of a crime, I encourage them to either contact the police department directly or to send me an email, leave me a message, whatever. Reporting a crime or talking to somebody about a crime on the Wentworth Bulletin Board does not amount to reporting a crime to the Wentworth Police Department. I mean, unfortunately, getting emails and phone calls of all people that are asking me if I've heard about something that's discussed on the Wentworth Bulletin Board, and I have and I follow up on it, but the Wentworth Bulletin Board is not how we report crimes to the Wentworth Police Department. So I would just ask for everyone's cooperation and patience and know that we're working diligently regarding some of the crimes that are taking place in Wentworth right now, and I will say that that's my, since I report, extremely, and I've had two of our officers also following up on some reports that we've had, a lot comes to be. Please, if there's a crime or you think that you're a victim, I've contacted the police department, leave a message for me, send an email, I will definitely get back to you.
Okay.
But the Wentworth Bulletin Board is not the place to be reporting crimes.
So in summary, Chief, I, and I'm making a plea to the citizens of Wentworth that you report crimes directly to the police department and do not use social media to report crimes. Thank you.
That's correct. I think to use social media as far as, maybe an email, but if there's discussion on the Wentworth Bulletin Board, you know, that may or may not get back to me. And I can tell you that one of the last investigations that I just completed because of a couple of postings that were on there that actually entered my investigation, because those postings gave the individual that we were looking into a heads up, that, that we will come in to have a chat with them. And unfortunately, it created an opportunity where they may have had the opportunity to get rid of some evidence or some, some idiot stuff that we will look into the pain. So sometimes it works in our favor, sometimes it doesn't, so I would just, would just, please feel free to interact with me directly, I have an open door policy of very friends and I want to be, to advocate for you, that's why I'm here, Chief, and that's what I want to do, so yeah, please contact me.
Okay, Chief, we'll be working with you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Chief Ames?
Yes, thank you, Chief.
Do you have any, do you have anything to add to that?
I just want to make sure everybody's had a chance, okay.
Chief, you're here, at the last meeting you brought up a nice proposal, like maybe we ought to revise our purchasing policy to match the needs of the fire department, the police department, and the road agent because of the changing economy, changing times, and especially emergencies. My thought was that we needed to have a policy that took into account emergencies, that it was operationally efficient and cost efficient. And you were tasked to meet with all the departments, had to come up with a program, and what did you come up with?
I believe you have it in your packets of the town purchasing policy. What I did was compiled information from several towns to help with this, as well as the Hampshire Municipal, some recommendations through that, and then I asked Linda to proof it for me because in me proving it's like, just not works well. In front of you is that policy that I feel would work well, we discussed it via emails with each department.
Right.
And I think that everybody feels comfortable with it, I'm not sure if the select board does or not, but.
Okay.
There's room for discussion. there's room for discussion.
Of course. Well, I appreciate you taking initiative, not only making the recommendation last week, but putting this policy together. Um, I've reviewed it. Um, Jordan, I'd like to get your input on this policy.
I reviewed it and it all seemed quite reasonable. I didn't see anything that I disagreed with.
Okay. Okay. Omar? Omar?
Yes?
Did you, did you get a chance to review the, uh, what the department heads put together for a new purchasing policy?
Well, I, I didn't realize that it was, uh, all, uh, put together by, uh, all the department heads. My, my only, my biggest concern is I believe that there should be a public hearing so that the people of the town of Wentworth can, uh, have an opportunity, have an opportunity to speak about it because of their money that we are going to be spending under this policy. And I think it's only fair to give them an opportunity to be heard. I think we need to have a public hearing on this, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, I do have a, I do have a few concerns, uh, but I don't have it, I, I don't have the, uh, I did read it over on the, on the, uh, packet that was sent to me, uh, via the email, and, uh, thank you, uh, Town Administrative Assistant, but I really think in fairness to the people of the town of Wentworth, the taxpayers, uh, that they need to be provided this opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have two comments on that. First being, uh, at one time the town of Wentworth said at a town meeting under a warrant article that we were not to expend more than $500, um, and that goes back quite a few years, uh, by each department. So my question would be, when did that change and was there a public hearing for it at that time? The answer to that's going to be, I believe, no.
I don't.
So that's step one. Step two, the public already authorizes a budget at town meeting. All we're asking for here is the selectmen to authorize, under the RSA that's quoted, to increase that expenditure and follow the guidelines set forth. That's it.
Okay, so as I understand, you're, this proposal is not increasing the, the town, okay, the town has given you, each department, the town has voted in a warrant and given you a budget.
Correct.
Okay. This is not increasing?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, correct. I need, you gotta say it louder.
Yeah, correct. It's not increasing.
Okay, it's not increasing. So you, you just need discretion to follow emergencies. You have the repairs and the fire engines and the police department?
Yeah.
Am I paraphrasing it properly?
That's correct. Quite honestly...
Hang, hang on, he's...
Quite, quite honestly, the thousand, and I think it's a thousand and fifty if I'm not mistaken, doesn't purchase you a lot of goods. For example, if I send an engine out, a fire truck out for service, just servicing the pump alone is going to cost fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars. That's not including servicing the truck. So, by the old policy, I would have to call the select board, get approval, uh, things of that nature. Again, the other side of things is in an emergency. Let's say that, um, something happened drastic to the fire truck, and we've had some po- problems. Those bills will come in at twenty-four and twenty-five hundred dollars pretty quickly. You, you can, if you want to stop that flow with your vendor and the piece of emergency equipment, but you shouldn't. So, by this policy, it allows the department heads to expend up to that $2,000 mark. And then also allows the chairman to do an emergency further. So, not all the select board has to be involved. If you've got somebody else sick or whatever the case is, it's all written into the policy that the, the chairman of the board has that ability to allow it to go past that 2,000 for an emergency.
Okay. So, as far as the public hearing, Omar, they're not, the, the town has voted on the warrant to give them their funds. All we're talking about is a way to make it more efficient for them to deal with emergencies. Uh, Jordan?
I think that we have our department heads that everybody trusts. You hire good people. We have good people in all of these different places.
Right.
If we don't trust them to spend up to $2,000 on maintenance items, then why are they the department head? So my thought is, is that we have good people, as soon as, you know, we're not, they're not going to abuse it. And if they did, you could rein it back in at that time, but it's not going to happen because they're not going to do that.
Did Chief, did Chief, Chief has a question on the phone?
Chief?
Yeah, uh, okay, thank you for your patience. I'd, I'd like to do a weigh-in on this a little bit of way quickly. First, to one of, uh, Jeff Ames and Linda, uh, especially Jeff. Jeff and I have discussed this in detail for a couple of weeks now, and he's put a lot of work into this and a lot of time. And after, he's a very busy, busy man to begin with, running his own business and everything. But we've gone back and forth, uh, in emails with each firm, long conversation that we met first we got in this. I just want to emphasize as much as I can that I think that going in the nail on the head. We have to, we have to at some point in time understand and realize that we have department heads that have been put in a position to run their departments, and the town of Wentworth, the community of Wentworth, trust those department heads to do their job. In order for us to do that job to the best of our ability to meet the needs of the community, there are times we have to make purchases or expect funds that have already been allocated to us at a town meeting. And in today's million age, $2,000 is not a lot of money, especially to the fire department. Uh, I just threw $600 into a break job, and it will not budget up to $1,000, who's at risk? And we had that discussion previously. What I would be concerned about pertaining to a public meeting regarding expenditures and budgets and a change in a expenditure policy is now, and I'll be, I'll be the first one to say this. I don't think anyone said it yet, but I'll be the first one to say it. I would be concerned that whether now we have, uh, a town government that is micromanaging their department heads to the point where we're not able to deliver the service to the town that we should be able to deliver. We're talking $2,000, and we're still helping handle every expenditure that we make. So let's, let's keep that in mind as well.
Right. I tend to agree with you, and my observation is that if it could vote it on, if the budget could voted on in the town warrant, that is the public hearing. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to accept this, uh, town of Wentworth purchasing policy, uh, which has been put together by the department heads, and they've done a good job with it. And, uh, is there anybody who wants to second? Hang, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to comment on something. I think I heard it correctly in today's meeting, that policy is up to the select board. You do not, you're not required to have a public hearing.
Oh, that's true.
We heard that this morning on the thing, because they talked about personnel policy, and, um, it's, it's a select board responsibility. You can have a meeting, of course, and invite the public to listen, but they, it's really not a hearing.
Okay. Um, yes, uh, all of the selectmen went to, um, a, all day seminar on, on the rules of being a selectman today. And, uh, okay, uh, go ahead, quickly.
Can I direct a question to Jeff?
Sure.
Uh, you mentioned the fact that it was done at a town meeting. Was that a warrant article or was it a non-binding resolution?
It was on a warrant article, if I recall correctly. It could be received.
On a warrant article, then you're somewhat committed to that warrant article until you have a warrant article that changes that. If it was a non-binding resolution, it's a different story.
So when did it get changed and what did it?
Do you have to vote on this?
Don't know.
You need to vote.
So, I do want to state, if you look at page one, under number two of purchases, it states the state RSA law for that. The board of selectmen is responsible for adopting and executing this policy, and it gives you that RSA number.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. So, I think this comes down to straightforward vote on, uh, on this new purchasing policy. Um, I vote to accept it.
I gotta, I'll second that.
You second it?
I second the motion, and I vote yes.
I vote yes. Omar?
I vote no.
Okay.
I think you're doing something wrong there because it's for a, for an annual meeting on a warrant article. That warrant article is still in law.
Right. You were already spending over $500.
You already doing that. You already changed policy. Somebody.
Already changed policy.
Okay.
To put it in perspective, honestly, I mean, I just have prices for Grader tires today because we need two to start.
Yeah.
I almost dropped over backwards. Yeah. They're nineteen hundred dollars apiece.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, I'm not, I, 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 I didn't have the time to...
So in that case, if you need two, you'd still have to come because it's $4,000.
That's exactly right.
You still have to bring it to us and then you have to vote.
And I've got it. I didn't have, I just got it before I got here, but I'm just putting it in perspective.
Right.
I appreciate the perspective. I'm gonna, go ahead.
So, do you want me to give you my updates on fire calls at this point?
Yeah.
A few?
Yes, yes. No, no, I do want your updates on fire calls.
So, um, since the last meeting, we've had three calls. One was a call into Warren for a crash fire that got away from this particular individual, and so Wentworth was toned to that, as well as Rundy's. That was one afternoon. Um, and we've got that taken care of. Then we had a regular meeting, um, and did a lot of hose training, right, Andrew?
Yeah.
Uh, so we did a lot of hose training with old and new, and then we had a fire call, the KFI, on a alarm activation. It was an accidental, thank God. Um, and then we had a structural fire just yesterday, I believe it was, in, in Benton.
Okay. I got a call on the Warren fire, a question, and I'm gonna pass the question on to you. Whose responsibility is it to get the fire permit? Is it the person renting the place, or is it the person that has the fire?
The, if the person that's renting a building from...
I hope everybody in town listens to this one.
If, if the person is renting, they must provide a note or a letter to the warden, myself,
Right.
giving them written permission with the date, et cetera, on that. And then, the person that is wanting the permit has to sign the permit. But I have to have that letter of written permission.
From the landlord.
From the original landlord, or from that landlord, right.
Okay, thank you. Um, can that question, that, that hit me on the day, right after the fire, I'm like, I don't know the answer to this.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be the answer. I also have forms that people can come and grab from me that the state has already laid out.
Yeah.
That they can just, they can sign.
I basically told the person that had the fire, I said, "Your responsibility to fire, it touched base with the fire department, and they can tell you what to do."
Yeah, okay. So that is, that is the process, yeah.
Okay.
Can it be written in the lease?
Can it be?
Yeah, but that doesn't...
It still has to have landlord or written permission on each permit to lay the state.
Is that even for like a seasonal campfire? The homeowner would have a seasonal campfire permit and then renters could use it?
If the renters are going to use it, they have to sign their own permit.
Permit.
Because they're going to be held liable if there's an issue.
With the fire, right. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to cut you short.
And that's fine. Uh, and then the last thing that I have is we are doing our plant sale Saturday, starting at nine, going to one. We're going to be practicing safe distancing. The tables, of course, will be outside.
Okay.
And we're going to try to police the best we can, that people keep that distance.
Okay, good. And that's going to go, is that going to go on the town website?
I posted it a few times on the, uh, Wentworth Facebook page, which automatically goes to the website.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Road agent, you're up.
Um, last week we had a culvert. Obviously, we kind of discussed that already. Um, this week, uh, we started up to, um, Zoh and August Road, or August Road, I don't know how.
August?
August Road, um, putting ditch lines in, really doing it the way it's supposed to be done.
Right.
Um, I had, um, three or four people today ask for magnesium chloride up there. It's super dusty up there. It's ridiculous up there. Uh, I don't have much left. Um, but I wanted to let you know that, uh, this morning, John King stopped by when I was up there, and he said it really warmed his heart to see somebody doing it the right way, the way the development was put in and putting the ditch lines in where they belong.
That's good.
Um, so, we've taken a few hundred yards of material out, and we haven't even started on August Road yet.
Are you, do, are you having, do you, do you have a source to dump it close?
So, the closest we had was Pete Carricketti, and then today I got an email from Linda. And he lives right on, um, Zoh Road, at the very end. And he can take, he said he could take thousands of yards, extremely close and works perfect.
Okay, good.
Should be done with that, maybe by the end of the week, and I need to discuss, um, the roller. You ready for this?
Yeah.
I really need to. Um, before I go there, for the bids that I had for the planking, I, I asked all three of those people for written estimates. I received one.
Okay, so, let's do the estimates first.
Yeah.
We got one written estimate.
I never received one from Brookside Lumber, and I never received one from Chris Crow.
Okay. What are the verb, who, who's the best price?
Chris Crow up in Littleton. We have to go up and pick it up. That's okay. It's going to save the town over $4,000. We can...
In this stage of the new budget?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking the naive question.
With, uh, Gold's Lane last week and the budget restrictions, I have no idea what's that, has cost the town yet. I'm guessing it's going to be between five and $7,000 for that one culvert.
Yeah.
So whatever we can save the town right now, I think it's a good idea.
Well, um, okay, so the most, just so I know the prices.
Yeah.
The Littleton price is what?
I think it was eighteen hundred and some change. I'll have it from, actually, if I have it from last time, I might still have it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, Sharp's lumber was $6,975. Oh, you got it right there, too.
Yeah, go ahead, read it up.
Sharp's lumber was $6,975. Uh, Brookside lumber was $6,742. And, uh, Chris Crow, who I just found out he owns Timber Wolf logging, I didn't realize that, but it's Chris Crow, and, uh, he will cut all of the wood for us for $1,860. So it's a saving, a savings of $4,115.
Is that all at the same, oh, white oak and everything?
It's white oak. It's not, he said it could be, uh, six to 12 inches wide, it's three inches thick.
I bet the other bid, so they, they also do it with white oak, or is that on?
Yeah, all of them are white oak.
It's all white oak?
All, all of them are white oak.
Bridges for bridges?
Yeah, uh, it's for the runners. We need to do Ellsworth Hill, Saunders, and, uh, Eastside Road.
Ellsworth really needs it.
Oh, I, I know.
I went to there yesterday.
I know. It really, really needs it, so.
So this will cover three bridges. Um...
Yeah.
What's your thought on the price of white oak?
I've never bought white oak lumber, but he's got three bids and wants $4,000 less. I would jump on it before it changes its mind.
Okay. Um, so make a motion.
Yeah.
Omar, can you hear that?
Uh, I, I, I could hear you, I could hear the rotation, I could hear, uh...
Jordan?
Uh, selectmen, uh, King, uh, but I thought I had heard it. But I thought I had heard another voice in there someplace.
Yeah, there's, there's other people in here. Yeah, I'm making a motion that we take the lowest price on this since it's so substantially lower. You wanna second it?
I will second that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm questioning this chairman.
Sure. Yes?
She went toward me.
Yes.
But I can't see. I, 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 I guess, I guess, you know, and I, I guess I agree in principle with the Selectman King, but why, why is it such a substantial? I mean, over four thousand dollar difference between, you know, two and, and a one. I, 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 that, you know, from my point of view, from my experience, when you hear something like that, you know, it almost sounds like nothing's done right. I'm, I'm just asking a question, Mr. Chairman.
Well, my sense is from, the fellow owns the company, he's vertically integrating this business and, you know.
The sawmill is part of a side job, it's like a hobby of his. And when I talked to him, Jared King actually turned me on to him and Jared talked to him first. Jared gave me his phone number. I called it because I didn't believe the price of eighty cents a board foot of white oak. And Chris told me, he's like, I have white oak log length sitting up here. He's like, just let me know when you want me to cut it, it's eighty cents a board foot. And I asked him a second time, I said, eighty cents a board foot for white oak? Because I know you don't really typically see white oak up in this area, you're gonna get down Tilton, Concord area. And he said he had a bunch of white oak sitting up there. He said, just give him a call and he'll cut it. It's a hobby of his, is basically all it is.
Is durability an issue?
Oh, white oak is the best.
I don't think you get anything that's gonna last long.
It, it's harder to, it's harder to install white oak because you gotta drill.
You do a pre-drill and a countersink and everything, but it'll, it should last fifteen years, I'm told, maybe longer.
He probably left those logs in, it was like thrown into a boat and he probably didn't end up paying very much for them and then he just had them sitting there.
Let's see, we need to vote.
Yeah, I know, but just, I vote yes.
I vote yes.
All right. Thank you. Homer?
I vote yes.
Okay. Okay.
The next thing is the BOMAG roller that I got permission to have Kevin Knapp take apart. Sit back, folks. So we have what is called an H fifty metric hydraulic motor.
In the drum. Okay.
The drum motor, the hydraulic motor.
Yeah.
It needs a seal kit, it needs a cylinder block, and it needs two bearings to start. The bearings are nine hundred dollars apiece. The cylinder block is eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. The seal kit is three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And they can't give me a price on labor, but they get ninety-five dollars an hour. And his best guess is forty hours of labor. We're talking seven, eight thousand dollars to fix this roller. I say we put it back together and do whatever we can with it. I don't want it at the town garage, it's not useful to me the way it is. Try to sell it, maybe get three or four thousand dollars for it. I understand the town bought it for fifteen thousand dollars three years ago. They used it a couple of times. It's no good to us, the way it sits, and I personally am not interested in putting eight thousand dollars in this thing.
What's, how, what's it worth?
Honestly, the guy on the phone, I talked to him today. He said if we get three, three to five thousand dollars, we'd be very lucky the way it sits, putting, putting it back together. And we're already probably five hundred dollars in with Kevin Knapp taking it all apart.
Was it new when we got it?
No.
No, it was bought down in Massachusetts by somebody else. I don't know. So I'm just letting you know, my, my personal feeling is go pick the hydraulic motor up, put it back together, let it leak. Put it on Craigslist, put it for sale somewhere, some way, and take whatever we can get for it. The other option is, is I can shop around and talk to a dealer and see if they take it in on trade. If we wanted to go that route, maybe wait till next year, town meeting and, I, I don't know. I mean, it, it's too bad to get five thousand dollars and we can't put it toward a new roller when it goes into the general fund.
Give me the parts you need and I'll shop around on eBay and see what I can do.
I, I don't know the parts because the parts are down at, I mean, it's down at TST Hydraulics. It's a very rare hydraulic motor.
Okay.
Eight to fourteen weeks just to get the parts.
So just to summarize this, you got a machine that needs a hydraulic motor. It's too expensive to fix the value of the machine.
In my opinion, yes.
And I agree with you. And so our two options are to put it back together and try and take it as a trade-in? Or to just sell the machine now?
Yeah.
So why don't you pursue both the options for putting it back together and putting it on Craigslist? And trying to get rid of it and see if the town can get, recruit some of the money out of it. There's no sense crying over spilt milk about what's been bought in the past.
No, I agree that side.
Just move forward positively. I'm, I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One, how often are we using that piece per year? And is it more feasible to rent one?
Yes. That's was where I was going. We can rent one for the summer for around twenty-two hundred dollars a month. You know, it sounds like a lot of money. But if we get it for like two months, we can probably roll all the roads after you create them, that's the big thing.
Yeah. And when you, when you ready the roads and you get it and you can roll it, you're gonna prevent the wear.
So I mean, that's, that's, that's being determined. I'm busy, but I am gonna make some phone calls tomorrow and just see what it would cost to rent one for a month or so when we're grading roads, maybe two months.
Okay.
So that's my report.
Okay. Let's just get back to us the next select board meeting and what you come up with.
I will do that.
Yeah.
Couldn't help but notice me going over to Jeff's, that Turner Cross Road has, still has the Bible offs and that from.
Turner Cross Road. Oh, Turner Road, yeah, 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 yeah.
Has the Bible, when we gonna grade that?
Well, we started the grading yesterday, but it's pretty wet. Did you see where we sunk in the mud?
No, I haven't been over there.
So we, we canceled that yesterday, we're gonna do that yesterday and today, and we canceled it because there's one section on the hill that's still wet.
The mud is still.
And we decided to go up to Augustine Zoo. And we'll be up there and then we'll be back hopefully on Turner and everything.
So you got a whole sequence of roads that you're following.
We do. Uh, the one other thing I wanted to ask the select board, the guys have told me to watch my spending, just be cautious of it. Do you have any guidelines of what I should and shouldn't do? Any budget line items that you're talking about?
I, I looked at your budget and it looked pretty tight.
I, I personally am getting calls for magnesium chloride. And I'd really like to purchase one, one round of it. I don't know if we have the money or not, I have no idea. We can purchase it and we have thirty days to pay for it after it's purchased. I, I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, I.
I mean, there's, I've had several people ask for it. I don't, I haven't, I don't even have fourteen hundred gallons, I think. That's not, that's gonna do Augustine Zoo, that has to happen.
Do you think we just realized how poisonous that stuff is?
Certified non-toxic.
We had, it's cert, certified non-toxic. That's been discussed, that's been discussed with us. Hang on. The question is to Linda.
Well.
What would it cost for one delivery of maybe?
Um, it's gonna cost ninety-three cents a gallon times six thousand gallons, so here will be fifty, eight hundred, fifty-eight dollars.
Well, I just wanna say, we are.
We're trying to figure out a price, we're trying to figure out how to, we're trying to figure.
Fifty-eight hundred dollars.
How costly.
Six thousand eight hundred dollars?
Five thousand eight hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Just a, a brief look at our cash picture. Right now, as of today, we have about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's between cash and our P DIP. Come June first, we're going to have to pay out a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, bringing our cash down to one forty-one. Along with all the other expenses we have, you know, which probably average somewhere around, I don't know, twenty thousand a week or so. Bills, tax bills aren't going out until June first or the first week in June. And, you know, they have thirty days to pay them. We will probably get a big influx of cash in July, but I just wanted to say that over the next month, it's cutting it close. And according to Deb Valk, the treasurer, we haven't had to take one of those mutual tax.
Tax.
Tax loans.
Tax anticipation note.
Tax anticipation note. For like fifteen years, you know, they're, they're typically short-term notes that you get from your local bank. But it would be nice not to be able to, you know, not to have to do that. And then after the first tax bill as, as well, you know, we need to consider the monies that were appropriated for capital reserves. All kinds of stuff coming up. So we just all have to like, I just curb the spending until we see some money coming in.
Should we vote on this magnesium card? I'm interested in these.
Most of your capital reserve expenditures can wait until December. The ones that probably shouldn't will be the ones having to do with roads and highways and bridges. Because you may want to take money out of that capital reserve to keep yourself afloat in that area as you continue to. I'm thinking in terms of Red Oak Hill and the bridges in Southwest.
Yes.
See, the thing is, if you don't stay, if you do all the grading, the ditching and the, and then you don't roll it and you don't stabilize it with the magnesium chloride, you, you lose the road, so you reverse them, and you're really adding to the expense. So that's our dilemma in a nutshell.
I mean, six thousand dollars is gonna make too much difference.
Fifty-five, five thousand five hundred and eighty to be exact.
Okay. So.
I have another question. If we don't buy, because we're barely under contract, we have to buy a certain amount anyways and we're gonna pay the rental fees of the tanks.
We're supposed to buy eight thousand gallons, but, I mean, he said, they're not gonna do anything, they'll just come and take the tanks.
So we're not gonna get a bill for that or something?
He says no, I mean, it doesn't say anything in the contract either.
I thought that it said that we were gonna be liable for.
It does, but he said.
It does say.
It does, he said they wouldn't hold us to it, I mean, I don't know. I didn't sign the contract.
No, I, I know, I know it wasn't you. I'm just trying to think that if we save money now and then we can hit with it later, we didn't save anything.
Yeah. At the very least, I would say try to use, use it sparingly and get one round and see what happens. We have thirty days to pay for it, so it doesn't have to be paid until the end of June.
I think that, you know, things will look better in July when the money starts coming in, it's just right now.
Yeah. Speaking of that, don't we, don't we start getting the New Hampshire block grant aid? Did you get ours in April?
We already got one, we got two this year, January and April. The, the block grant.
And then you should give another one then.
The block grants, the block grants do not, we should just get one.
But it is cash.
If the block grants do not, I'll lie here, spend more.
Oh, no, no, I, I was just wondering if we could.
Let's, let's just enter this on the, I'm gonna make a motion that we purchase one tank full, like you said, and use it sparingly. Homer, did you hear me?
Yes, may I have a chance to comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Thank you. I had a chance to re-renew that contract with the vendor of that poisonous materials. And all the contract says if the tech, if the, the town does not purchase, minimal amount, I forget what the amount is. The only ramification to the town is the vendor will come and take their plastic, uh, plastic containers. There, there's no lawsuit, it's, it's just, you don't buy the minimal amount of the materials, then the vendor comes in and takes a tax. So, you know, that, that's the only, you know, that, that's the only quote for a quote that, that's in that contract. There's no opportunity or no liability on the town other than they take the tax away. And if you don't, you know, if you use up the money there, uh, then, I, that's my feeling. Use up what you got, see what happens later on. I mean, we're getting some concern expressed to us by the, the town administrator assistant who I believe is pretty good with her fingers. And I, I, I just, and you know, I've had a number of townspeople express their concern to me about that stuff going on in the wrong ways.
Yeah, we've had, we've also have a.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We also have a lot of citizens that want it put on the roads, to stabilize the roads. So that's our dilemma. I'm just making a motion that we purchase one small amount. First of all, let me ask the question, Paul. The amount you have now, will that be, will you be able to meet the demands of the people that want it in town?
No.
No. Okay. So how much do you need?
Like I said, I, to do what I really, the people that I need.
Just to get it, want it.
I would say I need four to five thousand gallons. That's why I said if we do one fill-up of six thousand gallons, I can probably make it do. I got through last year using a very sparingly and I used about forty-eight hundred gallons.
Okay. If one.
And I literally just did it in front of people's houses.
Right. If, if one tank does that and, and fulfills the needs of the citizens that want it, because there's a lot of citizens that don't want it. I make a motion that we purchase it. I'll second that. Okay. Vote? Homer?
Yeah, uh, you looking for my vote, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, no one in town has come to me saying they want that material on their road, so I'm gonna, I've only had people say, no, they do not want it. I mean, don't want to purchase it, there's too much, too much risk, so I'm going to no, Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay. I vote yes.
I vote yes, because using sparingly are the people that want it.
So that'll do it.
Yeah.
What information may I ask? What does the contract say you must buy?
You'll have to look at the contract. I think if, when there's a sixty-three hundred gallons or eighty-two hundred or something.
A year, a year?
That's what it says, but we didn't buy any last year, I think, because we spent that money on a new truck.
We're still with tanks.
I feel bad for the people that live on August Road.
You should go up August and Zo Road, we're working out there and I get back to the truck and we had dust from the head.
Go on, I'm gonna read about the poison.
Okay.
Cast dog to bees.
At, at this point, we're going to, going to a non-public session.
Will you be carrying on any additional business after the non-public?
Uh, no.
You'll be closing the meeting.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna bring it back to public and then I'll seal it minutes and then we'll.
Close it.
Close it. Okay. So we're gonna close the meeting for non-public executive session and move to go into a non-public executive session by RSA ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, comma, one. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys, you guys vote, do you vote on that?
I don't remember.
Yes, sir.
I vote yes.
I don't know, too. They said, thanks for doing all that work.
Two. Any motion?
I don't need the motion.
I second the motion and the votes. I forgot, I haven't been in so long, I forget the procedures.
As to, Homer, do you want to go into a non-public?
Well, I can't vote until I know what the purpose is, you can get me.
I gotta get into the non, I gotta. I have to get into the non-public to discuss it.
It's pursuant to RSA ninety-one.
Section one referred to the chair actually.
RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, comma, one.
Colon, two.
Two.
C.
C.
There's a question in the form. I don't have that in front of me, Mr. Chairman. What, what is that gonna be referring to? If you have to give that, it's part of your motion, you have to give a reason-
To be, leave the matter, shit.
That's in the status in order to have a, the possible motion.
Uh, it's matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance, tax abatement, waiver, fee, fine, or other levy if based on the inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.